In the presence of a quorum and the time, I now call the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee to order. Good evening, everyone. I was going to joke around and say we'll do a hard stop at eight so we can all get the, go watch the Red Sox game, but I don't think that's going to happen tonight.
You don't know.
Tonight, we have some guests here. I'm looking forward to welcoming some representatives from the Minuteman Technical High School. And we're going to have some reports, walking us through the accountability, the new accountability overview from the Department of Education. And so, I hope that this will be an informative evening for everyone. I'm now going to move to item number three, public participation. If there is anyone here who wishes to address the school committee, we invite you to come forward at this time. Okay, seeing no one, going to move to item four. We have been receiving regular updates from our student reps from the high school, and tonight is no exception. I'm going to welcome Betty Markman up. She is a junior and one of, the third of three reps, or one of three reps. We haven't heard from her yet, so welcome Betty. Thank you so much for coming.
Up to this podium here? Yeah? Okay. All right. Hi, everyone. So, as she just said, my name is Betty Markman. Is it on? Is it on? Yeah, okay, cool. So, my name's Betty Markman, and I'm a junior over at the high school. And so, this is my first time talking at one of these, so bear with me. In terms of important events at the school right now, this week's kind of been packed. There's been career speakers, some colleges have come to visit, and we had our first wellness lunch of the year, which we usually have four of, once per quarter. This past week, many colleges from numerous different universities across the country have come to visit, which I think has been super helpful for all the seniors applying for colleges right now, and some of the more ambitious juniors. Yesterday, a bunch of career speakers came, anywhere from elementary school teachers to veterinarians and programmers, which was really nice for a lot of people. Last year, I went to one on public health. That was really cool. And today, the school had its first wellness lunch of the year. I didn't manage to go, but I heard that the students basically went out and got to plant a bunch of stuff in the garden, which sounds like a good time. And I'm glad the school is doing these things to help relieve stress. In extracurricular news, the freshman class election happened today. I don't know who the winners were, but congrats to them. I don't think any of them managed to get the student representative spot. I don't know if that's available for freshmen, but, and a lot of people don't usually run, but it's fine. And the band and color guard are doing MICA this weekend and the following weekend, so hopefully they get gold again like last year, or however they rank it. Yeah, that's all I can really think of right now, but thanks for having me. See ya.
Item number five on the agenda is statement of warrants. So, we have three warrants on the agenda. They are now being circulated, so please sign them and test them on. So, we have two vendor warrants, 19-008 PR and 19-008, in the total amount of $937,414.08 and one payroll warrant, P1908, in the amount of $2,537,194.47. In your packet, you found, hopefully, the October 4, 2018 minutes. I hear a motion to approve those. I'm hoping you've all had a chance to look at them. Are there any changes to the minutes? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
All right, so, good evening, everyone. I wanted to just give you a few updates tonight. First, you know, I was able to recognize a couple of our high school faculty members last meeting for recognition by the University of Chicago. And tonight, I actually want to just take a moment and recognize our art department. I put this in the memo to you, and we'll be sending it home to families. But the art department was actually heavily featured in a recent publication by the Columbia College Teachers College Press. And the publication is entitled "Studio Thinking: From the Start" by Gillian Hogan, Lois Hetland, Diane Chiquith, and Ellen Warner. And this is a book that focuses on the eight studio habits of mind that are in place in all of our art classrooms around the district. And this has actually been some PD that our art teachers have been working on the last few years. And it's just such a great recognition for our art program. I want to recognize Art Director Leo Mulner and the entire visual arts department for that recognition. It's really a tremendous achievement. We will be getting a little bit more history into that project and be providing that to you at a subsequent meeting in a memo, so you can read a little bit more about it. But I did click on, I put a little link in there that takes you to Amazon. If you do want to purchase the book, you can go ahead and do that. We will test you on it next time. Transportation update. This is a little bit more positive of a transportation update than I've given in the last few weeks. We did bring two new drivers onboard this past Monday, and they are riding routes. We have two more drivers slated to come on this coming Monday, so that will be four new drivers over a couple-week span. We know that when we bring new drivers into our system, it does take time for them to learn the routes, so we know that there's, you know, again, a little bit of disruption during that process. But the long-term prospects of us having to reroute buses because we don't have enough bus drivers are dwindling by the day. So, that's really good news, and we're hoping that that really smoothes out some of the most recent transportation glitches. The field lights, this was one of the more exciting photos I've ever taken. The field lights, I gave you a picture of it because I wanted you to see that the light poles are now installed and up. It was a long time coming with a lot of delays, and, you know, we feel terrible that there were these delays because I know it impacted a lot of our community programs, our high school athletics, our junior high athletics, as well as our music program. So, you know, thank you to the whole community for just bearing with us while we got that project done. I think for how frustrating delays can be on construction projects, what we all know is, once it's done, it's just such an improvement. And it really increases the quality of what kids get for years to come. So, thank you, everyone. Traffic at Parker-Damon. We are seeing some unsafe driving behaviors at the Parker-Damon Building, particularly at release time. We're seeing cars driving actually on the wrong side of the road. We're seeing cars doubled up in parking areas that they shouldn't be. We are actually working with the Acton Police. We have a meeting tomorrow morning with them as a staff to really brainstorm some ideas about how we can maybe change up the traffic pattern a little bit and make it safer. But we are asking families and people driving in the area to please drive on the correct side of the road. You know, pick up in dismissal times, park in designated parking spots only, so that we, you know, keep students safe in the area. Our telephone system at Blanchard is our next update, and this is actually more positive in the last 24 hours since I sent out this memo. We lost all our telephones at Blanchard, and we had deployed radios to that. We thought it was a complete server failure. It turns out, it was only a piece of the server, and we were able to recover our data. The server is older, and it's not, no longer supported, so it is something where the whole server system is going to need to be replaced, and very, very soon. But at least it's temporarily running now. We do anticipate getting quotes in for that in the next few weeks, and we'll be making a decision on how best to move forward with that. We, you know, the cost is something that we would be able to cover within our operating budget. And then, finally, I wanted to give you a little bit of an update on my entry plan because this is one of the things that I said I would report out to you periodically. But I have been making my way through classrooms throughout the district over the last two months. It's one of the more enjoyable moments that I have, is getting into classrooms and seeing teachers and kids doing what they do best. We have a lot of diverse instructional practices in place across the district, and it's really exciting to see, you know, what I've read about so long and heard about actually in place with teachers and students. I want to also update you that I've been holding forums. And so far to date, I have held forums with students at the high school. And actually, I just had the junior high school today. I also met with the faculty at McCarthy Town and the junior high school, and families at McCarthy Town and Blanchard Memorial School, so I'm making some good headway there. The next week is packed with different types of forums and focus groups. So, in the next week, I also have meetings for students at the jun, well, junior high, that was now today, Blanchard, Conant, Douglas, McCarthy Town, and Miriam. A meeting with faculty at Conant tomorrow morning, and then Douglas and Blanchard over the next week, and then for families at Miriam. I have focus groups for the remaining stakeholder groups already scheduled, and we're finalizing, I think, one last group that we need to take care of, but those will be happening over the next several weeks into a month. Just so, as a reminder to everyone how I use that feedback, I take all of my classroom observations. I take the feedback that I've received from you in one-to-one interviews and from our principals and senior staff in the one-to-one interviews, all of the feedback from focus groups, as well as looking at district documents and data. And then, what I do is I look across all of that information for the big patterns and trends that emerge. That then gets developed into something we call a report of entry findings, which I'll present to you in January. And then, what I'm going to be doing, hopefully, is being able to schedule a follow-up workshop with you after that report as a way to allow you to dig a little bit deeper into the report. We'll be doing the same thing with our senior administrative team. And that's a way to use some of those findings as a report to gather more feedback about what the priorities of the district are, so that we can kind of develop that next series of goals going into next year. I can tell you, you know, so far, there's widespread support for goals that we have around equity, goals that we have around wellness have been talked about in all of our groups, particularly high school students and junior high school students, very, very much appreciated all of the work around wellness that those schools are doing. And that came through loud and clear, and the desire to have more of it also came through. And I think what we can do is, you know, continue to bring in the feedback from our community and then come back to you and be able to talk about what we do with that next. So, exciting times ahead, and it's just been so great to meet all the different members of the community and listen to particularly what kids have to say about what they think is great about our schools, and then what they think would add value to our schools. So, thank you.
Can you just remind us how, these are sent out or posted on the website, and are they sent out to, do you like a mass mailing from the central office, or how do people get ahold of this information? Because your updates are, I find them very informative, and I think, I think everyone else does too, so.
Yeah, so, the updates that I provide to you, what happens is tomorrow, we will post this update to the superintendent's page on the website. And then, we also send a link out to all of our families in their native language indicating that that update is available on the superintendent's website with a link right back to it. With that, we also provide any FYI information or flyers to different events or functions or information that we feel is particularly appropriate to families. So, we do that every two weeks, and it's always the day after a school committee meeting.
I am very excited. We have invited Pam Nurse and George Clement from the Minuteman Technical Vocational High School. Acton is a member. Boxborough is not, but uses the, uses, sends kids to Minuteman. They are involved in a building project that is near completion, and we're following along behind them. So, I'm very excited to have them here to update us on the goings-on at Minuteman.
Good evening, and thank you for having us. I want to thank the superintendent, the chair. I want to thank Pam Nurse, Minuteman's school committee member from Acton, and thank you for having us here tonight. My goal, my name is George Clement. I'm one of the assistant principals at Minuteman, in charge of the academic programs, but I'm also wearing the hat of director of admissions over at Minuteman. And my colleague is here tonight, Dr. Amy Perrault. She is the head of special education, in case anybody has any questions that are a little bit more specialized and really in her wheelhouse. So, my goal in these few minutes is really to give you some news, a brief overview of what's been going on over at Minuteman, and then talk a little bit about the access and the relationship that we have with RJ Gray as we try to recruit and do outreach to new students. So, in terms of news, as you just stated, the building project is on budget and on time so far. Yeah, we're ready to occupy, hopefully, as they say, in the fall of 2019. So, any of the eighth graders that we're speaking to this month, this is, they'll be the first freshman class to be in there. That whole building is designed around an academy model, so it literally splits off into two separate wings. And what we've done organizationally is divided the faculty into two academies and then subdivided them into pathways. What that means is that we're building relationships and partnerships like we always do, but with more intention between academic teachers and career and technical teachers. The goal is, and one of the things that we do very well organically and naturally, is integration. So, you, for example, could go down to our carpentry area, and you would see our physics teacher doing a lesson with the physics students and the carpentry students at the same time, maybe discussing snow load on a roof and the physics behind that. You would see that manifested, last year, we had a team of our culinary arts, health-assisting, early education, and cosmetology departments, along with their corresponding English teachers, math, and the rest. They came up with a thematic instruction on heart-healthy behavior and heart-healthy awareness. And so, the way you would see that manifested that was really cool for the public is, actually was right outside of my office. You know, we had the cosmetology kids there giving you paraffin wax treatments to help relax you, and I felt very relaxed. And then, I went over to the culinary area, and they had recipes for heart-healthy food. And I said, "Well, why would I want to eat that?" "Oh, Mr. Clement, quinoa has a lot of protein and fiber." "Oh, well, thank you very much." But the new academy model is designed really to, so that we get more of that from what we do. Recently, we had a group of students who were here in Acton for Acton Advanced Manufacturing Consortium. You might have caught them on Acton TV. They had a great time. They weren't just students from our advanced manufacturing program, which is new. That program, we've recently received a butt-a-million dollars in grant money to get that program up. So, we brought our students from that program and from some others. So, we've been around Acton recently. Also, I'm proud to announce that in the last two weeks, we just found out that we are a 2018 National Blue Ribbon Award-winning high school. Thank you. Well, we get great students from Acton, so it's, you know, I want to give credit where credit is due. It's really the kids. But, you know, it's a remarkable achievement for us. One of the main reasons that we got it was because we've developed, we are really closing proficiency gaps. We have about 47, 47% of our students are in NIEP, and when you add in 504s, that pushes us right up over 50%. And yet, we're having kids make category changes, so they go from needs improvement to proficient, proficient to advanced. So, we're just doing, we're just doing really well. It's a happy time. It's a really exciting time to be there at Minuteman. In terms of access, so, one of my, like I said, one of my other jobs is to, is to help do outreach and reach out to potential students. We have a really strong, I feel, feel that the relationship we have with RJ Gray is truly a role model that I use when I'm dealing with other schools in our district. You know, I think we philosophically agree in a lot of things, how we treat kids, how we, what we want for our students. There's a lot of alignment there. But never fails, we usually start our process really in June, where it begins with, could we get addresses for the kids, because we want to start sending them some information home. And without fail, Jim Marcot is the first one to get us back that information. He's the first one to book us for presentations that we do to the eighth graders. Usually, it'll be me, my assistant director, we'll bring a couple of students with us, and they'll, who will just share a little bit about their experience. One of the nice things that they do here, because they understand at RJ Gray how to really manage kids well, is they will break it down by team. So, we'll have one team, we'll do a 45-minute presentation, and we'll bring in another team, we'll do a 45-minute presentation, and we'll come back another day. Again, I use that for every other system that I work with, because it's just, can be a little difficult to try to talk to 450 kids in one auditorium at one time. And actually, because of this, I have been able to achieve that at several of our other partner schools, because I've said, "Well, why don't you call Jim? Ask him how it works." Because that, it's a really good, it's a good fit. Obviously, we really want to continue to drum up admissions. You know, we get about somewhere between 10 and 15 students a year for each class that coming in from RJ Gray. We'd love to see that number go up. But we realize, and from talking to our friends over here, that as much as we can excite kids about what we're offering, it's really a family decision, and we really need to do more to reach out to parents. So, again, we broadcasted the idea to our partner schools that we would like to run what we're calling Minuteman 101, just a little primer for parents to understand what we're doing over here. And we had our, for our second one, but our best one so far, right here last night. We had about 35 parents come. RJ Gray did a great job. John Duklos did a great job just helping to advertise and reach out to parents and get them in here. I did about a 35-minute presentation. We had 25 solid minutes of questions, which were great. And then, I spent another half an hour here. We had to get escorted out because people just kept talking, you know, asking question, which is fantastic, which is really the, which is really the whole point, because it's a very important decision that they make. And as I tell the students when we do our presentation, I word it this way to them. I say, "Show of hands, how many of you would agree that the world that you're growing up in is very different than the world that I grew up in or your parents grew up in?" And they all put it up. And last night, what I asked the parents, I said, "I don't want to ask anybody their age, because I know that's inappropriate, but can you just raise your hand if you were born last century?" You know, yeah. I said, "Well, see, that's the thing about Minuteman, is that a lot of times when we're dealing with families or parents, they're like, 'Oh, I don't know about Minuteman.'" Well, it's not 1988. You know, it's not 1998. It's 2018, and we just won a National Blue Ribbon Award for being one of the best high schools in the state. It's a very different thing that's going on over there. So, anyway, that was a very successful night. They've also been very accommodating. Another strategy we're going to be employing this year with our assistant director of admissions, Maggie Miller, we've asked RJ Gray if we could just come at lunch, set up a table, we'll put a Minuteman tablecloth on it, just to be there to answer questions. And sometimes, kids want to understand, like, what is this field trip coming up, and how do I sign up, and what do I need to do, and can you tell me a little bit more? So, we're looking to do that a couple of times between, you know, November and February, which is the heaviest time for applications to come in, just to be a resource for the kids, but also for the guidance staff. Because I know parents here, you know, they have high expectations, so they ask a lot of really direct questions. I want to understand, what is the curriculum in this course? Well, you know, it's hard for them to know, but we know, so we'll put someone here, you know, every other week or something like that, it'll come up for an hour, and yeah, we're here to help, to help do that. But we really appreciate the relationship that we have. It's very productive, and like I said, it is a role model that we use and is very instructive for other systems in the district. I have some literature here for you. I don't know if I have to submit this officially, if there's a way to do that, but I'll, we'll just do that, just for your own edification, a little bit about Minuteman. And that's it from me. I don't know if you have any questions or anything else on your mind, or is Pam, I guess she has a few comments to make? Sure, yeah.
So, I hope you can tell by listening to George how much excitement and passion there is at Minuteman. And I have to say that I am very proud to be the Acton representative on the school committee there. One of the things that I wanted to offer, if people on the school committee would be interested, is the opportunity to come and take a tour of our building under construction. It's pretty exciting to go there. I would love to be able to take a group of people from Acton, and if there's any members of the school committee who would be interested, I'm seeing some hands. I'd love to be able to coordinate that. And I didn't talk to her before this, but Angie, maybe we could work together on making that happen? Thank you very much. And just to add, we are so excited about being named one of the National Blue Ribbon Schools. There's only been three voc tech schools in the country that have ever gotten this designation. So, we're particularly proud of that.
Any questions? Mary?
I just want to make a comment that, so, I do work in the field of public health. We'll tie back to Betty's comment. But we have found that working with hair salons and cosmetology groups is fabulous for talking about really sensitive issues, HIV, substance use disorders, because you talk to your hairstylist in a way that you don't listen necessarily to your doctor. So, it's been a great way to get out public health messages. So, I love that you brought that together in the Heart Healthy Initiative.
Angie?
Can you talk about, you mentioned about you do a lot of information sharing with RJ Gray. How about a high schooler? Can a high schooler take, transfer to the Minuteman? Is there such a program? Just curious.
Yes, so, yes, students can transfer in. They can transfer in sophomore year. The tricky part about that is whether or not a program is full. So, sometimes, I can, I'll give you, the one that's almost always full is, say, Electrical. So, I'll get a call, and they want to come to Electrical, "I'm sorry, it's already full. You might have to go with another option." When it comes to junior year, the restrictions are, there's very, very, very few choices. Part of that, and that's mostly driven by the fact that our expected outcome is licensure for students. So, let's take cosmetology, for example. You need 1,000 hours of certified hands-on time, in addition to the fact that those kids are studying anatomy, physiology, chemistry, psychology, legal studies, everything they need to do to get ready for that certification exam, which, by the way, we have a 100% pass rate on the state board exam for that. But you can't just come in as a junior and expect to achieve all that. You just can't. So, we do accept sophomore transfers. I wouldn't really count on juniors, there's a few programs here or there, but not, not very many. I always tell, as I told the group last night, the best bet really is to come as a freshman. It's the only year we do a full exploratory program, so kids can really take a good, hard look at nine shops very intensely, figure out what they love to do and do well. That's a, it's a unique opportunity for freshman year. And if, after all that, where everyone's brand-new and starting fresh, so it also has a different feel to it. And if, after all that, at the end of the year, it really wasn't for you, then that's, it's probably easier to transfer back to AV than it is to go the opposite way.
Ginny?
Thanks for coming, and I want to say that I've been following this in the news, I'm new to school committee, but I was born well in the last century and remember what the facility was like and how awesome it is that now those kids who don't take the traditional route are going to have a facility that reflects that they are very important people, too. So, I appreciate all your work. It's really wonderful.
I was just curious to know if the programming you do here at RJ Gray is unique, or you, do you do that in other junior high schools?
You mean like coming out the outreach that we do?
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, the middle school program, right. We also are doing that in Stowe, Bolton, and Lancaster, so it's unique to those communities. And it's nice, because it gives us a little toehold and another resource that we can promote CTE skills to all the kids.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number eight on the agenda. Every year, the Department of Education publishes an accountability report. There's an accountability piece to, to, well, let me start over here. I'm sorry. Deb Bookus is here to walk us through the new accountability report from the Department of Education. Thank you. Get my head around this here. I just wanted to kind of frame this in some history here. So, federal legislation drives this, and so, I mean, this goes back to 1965, 1965 with the Elementary and Secondary Education Act during the Johnson administration. Most of you will be familiar with like the No Child Left Behind Act. That was signed by George Bush in 2002. And now, with President Obama, President Obama in 2015 signing the Every Student Succeeds Act, there have been a lot of changes. So, we've invited Deb here to walk us through those changes for this year.
Can I just make one quick comment?
Sure.
So, just as an FYI on your table, and I also sent it over the email before the meeting, and there were a few copies available as people came in, but some of the questions that were submitted, we took those questions and compiled them. For the purposes of tonight, I actually organized those by topic, so that as we're going through, if you want to follow along with those, you can see some of the questions submitted that pertain to each presentation. They are right, I see it in front of you. It's right next to your name tag. Yep.
So, yes, thank you for the opportunity tonight to explain, share with you, the new accountability and assistance system from the Department of Education. So, I will start with a little bit of the history. Thanks, Diane, for getting that started. So, before 2012, the Department of Ed used the Massachusetts Accountability Five Levels and the requirements of NCLB. From 2012 to 2017, Massachusetts operated under a waiver. From 2012 to 2017, Massachusetts operated under a waiver, this was that time when NCLB had not been reauthorized, so Massachusetts applied for a waiver and received it. And at that point, they combined and used a single unified accountability system, which was levels one through five, and you might recall, I would talk about PPI as part of that metric. So now with the enactment of ESSA, the Every Student Succeeds Act, Massachusetts, along with every other state, had the opportunity, but within the parameters that ESSA set, to design a new accountability and assistance system. So Massachusetts designed a system, and using that system, they assigned different accountability categories, and I'll talk a little bit about that tonight. So first, I'm going to review six different components of this new system. We'll talk a little bit about some of the highlights, I'll walk you through what the new accountability indicators are, the weighting of those accountability indicators, then the two different components, the criterion reference component, as well as the normative component, and I'll also talk a little bit about the categorization of schools and districts. I moved two of the slides to the end from the original slide pack that was sent to you, because I think it just helps with the flow and the clarity and the understanding of this. So first, the system highlights. The department, so Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed's really set out to provide information besides test scores, so additional indicators, which I'll share with you in just a moment. The normative component is the accountability percentile, and that's applicable for schools, so it's comparing schools across the state. The criterion reference component is the progress that schools and districts are making towards targets that have been set for each of those accountability indicators. So that's the criterion reference component, and I'll break those down for you in just a little bit. There's also been a new focus on raising the performance of each school's lowest performing students, and they call it the bottom quartile, the bottom 25%. And then instead of levels, which is the old system, levels one through five for schools and districts, districts and schools are now placed into one of two categories, either requiring assistance or intervention, and without required assistance or intervention. And then lastly, in the past, the districts received the same accountability determination as the lowest determination for the school, but now districts are classified based on the results of all the students in the district and its lowest performing students. So those are just some of the major highlights and changes in the new system. So this classification is based on some accountability indicators that measure the performance of schools and districts. So for grades three through eight, in other publications, you might see this as non-high schools, I just thought for our purposes was easier to say grades three through eight. So for elementary and middle schools, the indicators include achievement in English Language Arts, in mathematics, and science, and that's based on the MCAS assessments, so that's that first row across. Also growth in English Language Arts and mathematics. The change this year is that they're no longer using the median for growth, they're using the mean, so that's a pretty big change. Progress towards English proficiency on the access test, that's the test that English learners take annually, and then schools and districts are rated on the percentage of English learners meeting the annual targets to achieve English proficiency in six years. So targets are set over those six years. And then lastly, the additional indicator for grades three through eight is what they're calling chronic absenteeism. It's based on the percentage of students in grades one through 12, so even though it's applicable for grades three through eight in the accountability system, it's all of our students, grades one through 12, missing 10% or more of school days, so 18 days or more of school. Now for high schools, they also have achievement and growth indicators, as you can see from the top two rows, as well as some additional measures. These include high school completion, which is based on the four-year cohort graduation rate, extended engagement rate, which is the fifth year for graduation, and the annual dropout rate. They also look at advanced coursework completion, so that's based on the percentage of 11th and 12th graders, so again, not the 10th graders taking MCAS, but the 11th and 12th graders of that year taking advanced coursework and completion. And they have to achieve a passing grade in at least one advanced course. And those are things like advanced placement courses, and there are also some selected rigorous mathematics and science courses. The department actually publishes a list for us to take a look to see which courses would count. Okay, so those are the different accountability indicators for grades three through eight and for high school. And then they weight those different indicators in the system. So here's the weighting of the indicators for grades three through eight. The indicators are weighted with a three-to-one ratio of achievement to growth, so 60% for achievement and 20% for growth. Then English language proficiency and the additional indicators, in this case, chronic absenteeism for grades three through eight, are each weighted 10%. If there's no EL subgroup in a school or a district, that 10% is then distributed among the achievement and the growth, as you can see in the top two rows there on the right-hand side. Within an indicator, each one of those measures has equal weight. So for example, for the growth at 20%, the English Language Arts growth would get 10% be weighted, and the math would be weighted 10% as well, so even within a category. All right. And then as noted in this table, for high school, the indicators are weighted at 40% for achievement, 20% for growth, then again, 20% for high school completion, 10% for English Language proficiency, and then 10% again for the additional indicators. And then again, within an indicator, the measures have equal weight within that row. Then, schools and districts are held accountable for improving student performance in each one of those indicators as part of what's called a criterion reference component. So now we're into those two different components, the criterion reference, and then I'll talk about the normative component. So based on 2017 data, what they did was they set improvement targets for each one of those indicators, and improvement is measured both for all students and for a new group consisting of the lowest performing students, that's that bottom quartile. So these are students who have been enrolled in the district for at least two consecutive years, and whose performance on the 2017 MCAS placed them in the lowest quartile of the school. What they do in grades three through eight, where students are tested annually, so they're able to use a cohort model, the schools evaluated based on how the same students performed on the 2018 MCAS, so they're cohort to cohort, as well as the additional indicators. The only caveat is that students may not be a first or second-year English learner. For the high school, they have to use a year-to-year model, so the evaluation is based on improvements of the 2018, how the 2018 lowest performing students did as compared to the 2017 students' lowest performing students. So last year's 10th graders compared to how the 11th graders did that year before, okay, so year-to-year model. But again, students can't be first-year English Language Learners or second-year English Language Learners. And they do that using a combined English Language Arts and Math Average Scaled Score, so the science piece is not part of that measure. All right, so this slide just shows you a side-by-side comparison for the accountability indicators for grades three through eight on the left and high schools on the right-hand side. I think it's important to note that what the department has shared with us is they've only set targets for next year, for this year, because of limited data. So this year, the targets were set, we've been accounted for against those targets, but going forward, they'll set much longer-term targets, because they'll have three years of data, it's a richer body of data for them to look at. All right. So once they know how we did on those different targets, they assign points based on the progress towards the targets that was set for each of the indicator. And this is done for the aggregate group, for all the students, and also for that bottom quartile, remembering that the bottom quartile is also part of the all set. So zero is declined, one is no change, two is improved, so there's been improvement, three is met the target, and four is exceeded target. So that three out of four is really important, that's that 75%, I'll share with you, share with you a minute. All right. So I'm going to walk you through this table in a minute, but why don't just quickly say for this piece is that the points are then assigned for each measure, then they're weighted by the indicator, and then converted to a percentage for all the students and the lowest performing students. You can see on the left, there's a column for all students and lowest performing students. Each one of those categories is equal to 50%, so there's equal weight in terms of the calculation. Then these two percentages are averaged to determine the criterion reference target percentage for each school and then for the district. Schools and districts earning 75% or higher, so that's with that three-fourths, are deemed to be meeting targets. Those earning 74% or lower are meeting, partially meeting targets. So this is an example for a school, grades three through eight, for example, of three through eight. The high school would just have more indicators, so I thought this one for clarity to walk you through would be easier. So let's take a look at the left column for all students. The total possible number of points was 12. This particular example, seven points were earned, so weighted 60% would be 4.2 points. Growth, possible points, eight. Achieved was seven, so 1.4 points. EL progress, again, was, let's see, two out of four, so that would equal .1. And then absenteeism, three out of four points earned, and so that would be .1. And so the total, 6.1 total points earned, you take the weighted total of points earned and divide it by the total possible points to get the percentage of total points. Then you're going to add all the student and lowest performing percentages and divide by two for the criterion reference. You're going to do that for both columns, take 6.1, divide by 9.6, same thing for the right column, and then you're going to average it. So 64% in this particular example would only be partially meeting targets, but still not requiring assistance, which I'll share with you in a minute, the two different categories. This would have been set, needed to be 75% to have met targets. Okay. So one of the questions that was asked is whether or not there are improvement targets that are set for all the other subgroups, and there are, for high needs, for students with disabilities, for ELs and former ELs, economically disadvantaged, and seven different categories of race. But only the all students and the lowest performing students' points are used for the accountability piece. Okay, so we can most definitely break that out. The only caveat there is if a subgroup is in the lowest 5% across the state, it automatically puts a district and a school into requiring assistance or intervention category. So that's the only time it can come into play. All right. So then how do they categorize, whoops, the schools and districts? So you'll see there are two broad categories there, schools without requiring assistance or intervention, and schools requiring assistance or intervention. And I don't particularly like the parallelism there as an English person, but that's okay, that's from the state, just so you know. So schools earning 75% or higher are deemed to be meeting targets, those earning 74% or below are partially meeting targets, but both are in that same big broad category there of not requiring assistance or intervention. Now, a couple of other things to note on this slide. On the right-hand side, a school that has less than 95% participation, so that last bullet, under focused targeted support, schools with low participation, it needs to be 95%. They use a two-year participation rate, and that's the aggregate, or any subgroup that happens to be under 95% participation will automatically be put into that category, no matter what the other scores are. And that's been a concern amongst districts. We've seen quite a few other districts and schools that would typically be considered high-performing, but just didn't have the participation rate, and so are automatically placed in that column. Again, if a subgroup is among the lowest 5% of subgroups, that 1 to 5% across the state, the school will be placed in the requiring assistance or intervention. And then, you'll also notice that yellow box that's there, or gold box, in 2018, the state set two different categories, meeting targets and partially meeting targets. So any percentage that was 0 to 74% was automatically partially meeting, and anything over 74% was meeting targets. Under consideration right now, the board has not voted yet, is to have three categories next year. So 0 to 49 would probably be not meeting targets, 50 to 74 would be partially meeting, and then 75 to 100 would be meeting targets. So this was a bit of a grace period as they're testing out this new accountability system. We'll see what happens. We know, we do have a roundtable meeting with the commissioner next month, our ED CO Board does, and Peter and I will be attending. We know that we have lots of questions to ask the commissioner about the new accountability system, and unfortunately, he's really open, as we've heard, to hearing the feedback from districts, to see how this is working out and playing out in the districts. So districts are also categorized. Our district, which met targets at 88%, and each of the schools, overall classification is without required assistance or intervention. One of our elementary schools was at partially meeting targets, but all the other schools were at meeting targets. So the system is new to us, we're continuing to unpack it, looking at all the many different data points, those indicators, as you can see, so looking at MCAS and diving into that data, but also those other indicators as well, to see what other structures and strategies we can be learning from each other, and those that we need to employ in this new accountability universe. All right. Next, last, is the normative component. This is only for schools, this is not for the district. This compares the performance of the students in the school to all other similar schools in the state. So the elementary schools and the junior high are compared to all schools serving grades three through eight. The high school is compared to all schools serving grades nine through 12. What this does is it compares the individual indicators from the 2018 data, ranks them, and assigns a percentile 1 through 99. And once again, districts aren't accounted for in the accountability percentile. The difference here with MCAS for last year and the accountability is that the junior high was in its own bucket. So the elementary was one bucket, the junior high was a bucket, or middle schools were a bucket, and the high school is a bucket. Now grades three through eight are all in one larger bucket, so it's a different, sort of, as they call it, a different comparison universe. And so that's just something for us to keep in mind as we're moving forward with this. And then a couple of Desi's do's and don'ts. Again, they're asking us not to compare this data to historical accountability results because the percentiles, the performance targets, they're additional indicators, they only have two years of data and different comparison groups. They're asking us not to equate the 2018 accountability categories with historical accountability and assistance levels, you really can't do a crosswalk from one to the other. But they do want us to use it for internal planning, which we have started that process. They want us to review any of the resources that they have available, and they want us to ask questions, which we're most certainly are going to do when we see the commissioner. So I'm happy to answer your questions. If there's something that I can't at this moment, I'm happy to do the research and find the answer for you.
Do you mind if I just offer a couple of comments? You know, I think this is a system that if we try to get so into figuring out exactly how these calculations are made, we could certainly all drive ourselves crazy. I don't think that at the forefront, whoever did this in a room was thinking joy, wonder, and curiosity were like the ultimate goals of education. I think there's value in this data, though, and I think the addition of lowest quartile is a really important target, and that was added with some really specific intention this year. What we know is that every school in the Commonwealth has the lowest quartile of performers. So every school has a bottom 25% of MCAS performance. You could be in the 99th percentile as a school, and yet 25% of your students are your lowest 25%. And there's a new focus on making sure, no matter how well your student aggregate population performs, you need to continue to focus on strategies to help your lowest performing subgroup continue to improve and make progress. And that's a new, really new concept for every district around this state, but it's really important in terms of equity and what we're doing for kids. So I think that's certainly something that I would say to you, that's a great number to start looking at when we do start presenting data to you. Lowest quartile is important. I think then what we also want to look at is how are individual subgroups performing in relation to others? Because that is the basis of all of the equity work that this district has been focused on over the last few years. We need to make sure that when we say we're a high-performing district, and, you know, Dawn and Deb will answer this, the final question has to be, for whom are we a high-performing district? It's not just that we're a high-performing district, because overall, it says we're in the 95th percentile, or 92nd, or 88th, or whatever the number is, that's all well and good, but who are we really doing this job for, and how can we continue to improve the outcomes for those kids? And then, I think as educators, we need to be able to look at this data and then translate that back into joy, wonder, and curiosity, so that when our kids experience this, it's not a statistical analysis of their life and value, but it really has to then get translated back into kid-friendly language, and that's the magic of our teachers in this district. So, you know, I just want to make sure that, you know, as we get into the weeds on all of this data, that we don't lose sight of that the overarching goal of all of this is to make kids lifelong learners and passionate about what they're learning, because I don't know as though this sometimes makes us all feel that way as educators, so. So, um, again, it serves its purpose, and it's great data, but we need to understand that it's a limited purpose, even though it's valuable.
To Peter's point about the twenty-five percent, just over the summer at our leadership retreat, I think we shared a little with you that we started to look at that data. So we took the twenty-five percent, that quartile across the district, and we broke it out in lots of different ways to look at that with absenteeism. When students moved into our district, different subgroups, high needs, we looked at it by race, we looked at it by gender, we looked at it lots of different ways so that we could get a better handle on our lowest twenty-five percent and the kinds of things that we need to start thinking about as a leadership team so we can support learners in the district. So we're, we, I do like that shift, I have to say, in terms of the, the way the information's presented. It also is a game changer in the sense that it used to be if a subgroup did not perform well, the entire accountability was based on that one subgroup. And I do think it, it put focus in a negative way. This way, we're looking at all of our students more broadly than that twenty-five percent. So it's a little kinder.
Tessa.
Can I just ask another question about the twenty-five percent? So when you look at it just for data purposes, are you looking at it like the bottom quartile of, say, the third grade performers or the bottom quartile? Like, do you break it out that way as well?
We broke it out by school first, to look at it by school, by gender, by race, by special needs, by different IEPs, by five oh four, trying to think of all the other different ways that we broke it out, lots of different ways. We didn't look, break it out by grade yet. And with that piece, yeah, we could certainly do it that way as well, just to see.
Well, I was just curious, like, when you say bottom quartile, so you're looking at, if a school has five hundred kids, right? So the hundred and twenty-five kids that scored the lowest, you're looking at that grade three through six. Okay.
Well, we, a school would just be three through six. But then, yes, we looked at seven and eight as a, the junior high also. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Um, we do that with MCAS for sure. We do the item analysis by grade, but that'd be another interesting way to look at it. Thanks, Tessa. Yeah, great.
Paul.
So as you're doing the internal planning and looking at this, this data, is there anything that's kind of coming out to cause you to rethink curriculum or, or teaching and learning?
So that part would be more of an MCAS data dive, and that's what we're doing right now to that item analysis piece, just to see where those kinds of things would be. But, yep, keeping an eye on some of the math pieces. I'll share that later on with you. This is more around that, the bigger, broader accountability pieces. Thanks.
Michael.
Yeah, I have a question, though. How do we identify the low performer students? What, what are the standard, what are the criterias?
So it's the average scaled score of their math and their English language arts compared. So if it's three through eight, it was a cohort, so depending upon how they did the previous year in two thousand seventeen. If it was high school, it's a comparison by grade. So it's the year previous to how this year's students did on those same tests. So it's the MCAS scores for ELA and math.
Okay, so solely based on the scores? The test scores? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. That's how the state is accounting.
Mary.
So you can totally tell me this is not appropriate to answer tonight.
Okay.
But, but in that context of this is one piece of what we're doing, I wonder, could you comment a little bit about some of the other ways you're looking at student and student performance that are maybe not quite so test-driven and quantitative?
So, I mean, I think we think about the things like our, our surveys that we give to our students. We're going to be doing the Challenge Success Survey again this spring. They have a wonderful new data dashboard they're sharing with us where we can look at students who took the survey three years ago to see, again, that cohort style, as well as comparison by grade. So we have that, we have the YRBS that also takes a peek at the wellness piece. We have our own grade level assessments that our educators use. That's another way at the school level that they're looking at student work. We know in the educator evaluation process, we ask for student feedback about their learning, about their teacher. And so that's another way to get some student voice into that, and that happens K all the way through grades twelve. So trying to look at the whole, as Peter said, that whole experience of a student is so important. Yeah.
I just, I, I, this summer at the MAS, we had a summer institute in Marlboro, and the associate commissioner for data was there. And I just, I just want to, I wrote down something he said that I think was important. He asked the school committee members who were there to tell their, the, the other members of their school committees that the department is aware that the indicators that comprise the mass accountability system are not an exhaustive list of what makes a healthy school and district. By necessity, the department can only select a small number of indicators. So having, having said that, because since you're going to talk to the commissioner, a number of people there were bothered by the fact that we're measuring student absenteeism because it, well, it does impact achievement, but all teacher absenteeism also does, but that didn't make it on the list of accountability indicators. So when you go talk to him, I would love to know more about that and, and, you know, why other indicators might have been excluded from the accountability system.
Yep. Happy to ask. Thank you. Okay, Angie.
This more, I'm not familiar with this system. So this is a state mandate, right? And is it funded? Is there, does that impact any funding or any sort?
So it's a mandate only in the sense that this is what the state has to use to hold us accountable for our progress. And every state has to do that in order to receive federal funding from the federal government as part under ESSA. So just in terms of, is there funding to support this? Only that we receive the federal funds that flow through the state to us. I guess that would be the only thing that would come through being, supporting through this.
Okay, thank you, Deb. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Eileen, I never see your hand. I'm so sorry. Go ahead.
I, I'm sorry if this question is not, I don't know if I should ask, but I, as I understand, we're talking about the test score. What is this test? Is there MCAS or?
Yes.
It's MCAS score?
Yes.
So I think I kind of heard Marie, and I would like to think about that. Because if we just, um, consider the twenty percent of the lower performance of the MCAS score, probably not necessarily match the kids, their performance generally in school. So I just, I don't know, but.
It, it may not. I mean, that's one of the things we can certainly look at. And so we know who those students are, and it's, it's up to us as professionals and leaders and school leaders to make sure that we're doing everything we can to make sure that those students are succeeding. But again, it's just, it's one indicator. It's one data point. I think I talk about this every time, every year, that it's, it's one data point on one or a couple of days that students take a test. It's one that we take seriously and we consider, but it's one of many measures. So yes, they may be performing very well in school, but on this particular test, or they didn't do well, or one of those two tests, they didn't do well. Yes.
Yeah. But here comes the, you know, the follow-up question is, so how do we help those kids? So it's like the large twenty-five percent or just based on this, you know, the, the result of the MCAS score, that twenty-five percent?
So the, so back to Peter's point, there's always, in this accountability system, there's always going to be a bottom quartile. There's always going to be a bottom twenty-five percent. So we need to always just be looking to see, how are those students doing from year to year? And if a student is performing the bottom quartile after a couple of years, that is, again, we start to look at trends and patterns to see what kinds of things are interfering. But we're never going to get rid of the bottom twenty-five percent because that's built into the accountability. So I think it's just, it's an ongoing, it's not a problem to be solved, it's something for us to always consider and always be, be looking at. Yeah. Okay. Yep, thanks.
Item nine on the agenda. Marie is here to present the update for student enrollment using the October first numbers. Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. So I'm going to go over a couple of things tonight. I do have a short presentation, much of which was in some of the pictures in your packet. But the October one report itself, I'm just going to talk you through page by page what you're looking at because the first two pages will be in your packet every month all year. And then the remaining pages, we do once a year on October first. And all of this data is what we call SIMS that gets submitted to the Department of Education actually next week. So every district in the state pulls this data as of October first, so once school settles down and we know who's here and who's not here. And then the charts you'll see on the Department of Ed website come from our submission, SIMS being the Student Information Management System. So the packet, that's October one itself, that first page, just to make sure everyone's clear, each month you'll see numbers all year. A are students who live in Acton. B are students who live in Boxborough. And C are any students who don't live in Acton or Boxborough, namely choice students or staff students. And then you'll have the totals. All right? On the next page, this is the elementary chart. That's all the classrooms. So you'll see exactly how many students are in each classroom throughout the year. And we monitor class size, in particular at the elementary schools. So I just wanted to make sure some of the nomenclature, you understand what we're saying. So up at the top, for each school, we total the number of all-day K students and half-day K students. All of the half-day students are in the morning, so it says AM. So we have not had any afternoon half-days for three or four years now. Then you'll see each classroom, how many kids there are. And then you'll see, if you look down the Blanchard total, the numbers that are not in bold are the numbers of kids from Acton attending Blanchard. All right? So we have a total of ninety students attending Blanchard who live in Acton of the four hundred and sixty-four. So about twenty percent of Blanchard's from Acton. We've been able to strategically place those kids in classrooms that maybe had smaller class sizes or had open seats. And then where there were more kids from Boxborough, we didn't put as many Acton kids, if any, in those classrooms. And so then you'll go across each of the schools, and then in the right-hand column, the far right, you'll see the total at the grade level, the total attending school in the opposite town or choice. And then the number of sections, so seventeen, eighteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, eighteen. Those are the number of classrooms we have at each grade level. Everybody with me? All right? And then we have the average class size. So when, when I say enrollment has dropped, we've gone from twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two classrooms at a grade level to seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. All right? And similarly, in schools, Blanchard has twenty-three, so across the bottom tier, the bottom highlighted column, Blanchard has twenty-three classrooms, average class size of twenty point two, and four hundred and sixty-four students. And then you can keep going. Conant has twenty classrooms. Douglas has eighteen. So we have been dropping Douglas and Gates quite a bit. Gates has seventeen. So they both went from twenty-one down to seventeen and eighteen. McCarthy Town, we added a couple of classrooms. They have twenty-four. Merriam has twenty-two. And there are fifty-one Boxborough students attending school in Acton. All right, the rest of it, I'll go quickly. Page three is, we call it the column C breakdown. So we tell you how many are staff kids. As you know, the teacher's contract, the custodians, and the office support contracts allow, if they have a, a child that they want to attend here, within limits, they can attend. There are limits at grade levels. Choice students, right now, we have nine at the elementary. We have six at the junior high, and we have eight at the high school. The elementary all came from Blanchard. We've stopped taking new choice, but we have taken siblings of existing choice since regionalization. So you'll see zero or one in each of those years. And then the right-hand side shows at each grade level how many Acton residents are attending Blanchard and how many Boxborough residents are attending Acton. All right, on page four, this is similar to what you saw on the front page. The point of this page is to show the percentage of Acton students, which is eighty-four point fifty-eight percent, and the percentage of Boxborough students, which is fifteen point four-two percent. That feeds into the assessment, how we assess each town. The next page is the demographics. I did not put anything in the, in my memo or charts about demographics because it's fairly consistent with last year. The thing that has happened over the last two or three years is that our Asian-American students are selecting more and more Gates and Conant and less and less the other schools. So for many years, every school was about thirty to thirty-five percent Asian-American students, and Conant was higher. But now, Conant and Gates, Gates is fifty-six percent, Conant is sixty-one percent. But you'll see many of the other schools have dropped closer to twelve to twenty percent. So that's something we're exploring and talking through any potential impacts or changes. You will see that we have more African-American and Hispanic students at McCarthy Town than any of the other schools. And then that's pretty much everything on that chart. The next page are economically disadvantaged students that were up about a percent. I'm going to talk about that a little bit. We have eleven point two-three percent at the elementary, ten and a half overall. The next page shows you a three-year trend. We are relatively flat, and I have some charts about that. And then the next two pages show the three-year comparison of Acton students and Boxborough students. That is important for the, how we do the assessment. So we assess Acton and Boxborough based on a three-year average enrollment. And then the last two pages are students attending Minuteman and English learners. And I have some charts on English learners. So I just wanted to go through that relatively quickly. So my slides are really what is in your packet. I added a little bit to this chart, so this is called enrollment totals. I put the sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen enrollment, just so you can see, it is flat. In fact, the elementary's been remarkably consistent, twenty-seven fifteen, two years ago, twenty-seven oh three, twenty-seven oh six. The junior high had a blip last year where it popped up to nine sixty-four, but it's back down to nine twenty-three. And then the high school, eighteen sixty-seven, eighteen twenty-seven, eighteen thirty-seven. So relatively flat, slight decline. And so total K twelve, fifty-four ninety-three two years ago, fifty-four ninety-four last year, and fifty-four sixty-six. So very consistent, call it a plateau. We're in a relatively flat enrollment period. The projection is pretty interesting. So overall, very close, K to six. We had seven fewer students than were projected. Junior high, we had five fewer. High school, we had twelve fewer, for a total of twenty-four. Very on target. But I'm going to break out the elementary school so you can see a couple of discrepancies. And then you can see the totals at the bottom, including pre-K, which the thing about pre-K is as students turn three years old, they enroll at that time. So the June numbers are always quite a bit bigger than the October numbers. So we watch that throughout the year as well. Our district, and then the totals. So as I put in my memo, kindergarten continues to befuddle us and the projection agencies. So kindergarten. So kindergarten itself, we had 16 more students than projected. And then they're in opposite directions by town. So my next slide is going to break it out. So Acton came in way over, Boxborough came in way under. So that matters to us because we have a hometown guarantee. And so we budget for a specific number of classrooms in each town. This year, we budgeted for four kindergartens at Blanchard. Turns out, that's okay. But I think next year, we're going to budget for three. So the other place was fifth grade. So fifth grade was over by six students. You might remember that we increased a classroom in Boxborough and a classroom in Acton, but Acton was over by quite a few more, and Boxborough was actually under projection. So it's kind of not balancing out exactly evenly. Second grade and first grade actually came in lower than projection. The last couple of years, they were over. So it's a little bit tricky. We know we had a huge housing boom for a couple of years, from 2015 through about six months ago. Hard to know what's happening right now. So here's the Acton K-6 breakout. As you can see, kindergarten was over by 27 students. That's a classroom and a half. Fifth grade was over by 11 students. So thank goodness, we added a classroom, but they're all still pretty full in fifth grade. Boxborough kindergarten was under by 15 students. So 75 was projected, 60 was actual. Now, three years ago, the projection for this year for Boxborough was, I think, 53. So some of it might have been overreacting to the boom and what happened last year and the year before. So it's a little hard to tell. So we had 60 actual kindergarteners from Boxborough. We added three. We have four classrooms at kindergarten. We know that class is going to grow over time. So I think we still would have needed four in the end because to start at kindergarten with 20, you're only going to go up. So I still think it worked out in terms of the numbers of classrooms. And then fifth grade was right on target. Sixth grade was under by five. And then, so I broke out kindergarten in particular. So Acton projection was for 239. We got 266. So we were over by 27. Boxborough projection, 75. We got 60. We were under by 15. So that's 20% in Boxborough and 11% in Acton. But when you look at the total, it doesn't look like that big because it balances out. Our economically disadvantaged, I went back in history a little bit. Somebody asked this question before the meeting. So 10 years ago, in 2008, 2.27% of our students were economically disadvantaged. Now it's 10 and 1/2. This has been happening in Acton and Boxborough. It's happening in each of the schools, although a couple of them are closer to 15% and a couple of them are closer to 8%. But it's changing how we're thinking about things, how we're teaching, how we're thinking about equity. 10%, 11% is, that means every classroom, teachers are thinking about how to meet the needs of kids who might not be eating, who might not have resources at home and so on. So you're going to hear more about that in our district work and our budgeting. English learners is another area where we've had significant growth. You've been hearing about it for many years. You've done a great job supporting our staff to increase our English language educators. In 2008, we had 81 students. This year, we have 227. It's actually dropped a bit from last year. And that includes, we've added in our early childhood program, preschool students. But we've also, you know, we added a lot of staff over a couple of years. So Dawn and Mary Ann Young, our EL chairperson, have done a significant, excellent job of standardizing our assessments and our criteria, both for students entering and exiting. And so we think mostly this has been sort of tightening up our procedures. We do have large numbers of students who, it's a verb, fled out. So recently came out of the EL program that we are also monitoring that could go back and forth. Dawn's going to do a presentation on EL in November, in the mid-November meeting. And then I just did two charts to show you historically where we've come from, K to 12. We peaked at close to 5,900 students. And the low number will be right around 5,400. We're close to that right now. And then we start to go back up again. This is K-12. Remember, it takes 13 years for it to get all the way through. So the next chart will show you elementary, where we have already bottomed out and we're flat, starting to go up. But this is sort of the long-term enrollment curve. And then this is K-6. And the line is where we are right now. So we've been flat. This is sort of our fourth year of flat. We've got two more years of flat, and then we start to go up. But we were close to 3,000 students, and we're at 2,700. So we did drop quite a bit, which is where you've seen some of the section drops. These two charts are brand-new. We got the enrollment projections two days ago. So November 15th, you'll get another presentation around enrollment projections. They're not actually very different than a year ago. So I think we're getting some more consistency in there. And with that, we'll talk about recommended class sections for the budget. So that's what I have. Do you have any questions? Mary?
Mary. I have two. First, can you talk about the K to 1 relationship? And might we see that 15, those 15 kids that were projected for Boxborough that didn't come in kindergarten this year, might they come next year?
Yes.
You know, because there's...
Yeah, so all the data we have is birth by year and census by year. So it is possible, and this has happened in the past, that we have more kids born in the fall in the calendar year, of which we were looking at the census, that will show up next year instead of this year. And so sometimes it goes back and forth that way. So that's one thing. The other thing is, we do have kids who enroll in first grade. A lot of families still do private K. But that number has gone down. We used to get about 25 to 35 new first graders every year. That number's gone down since we've made all-day K much more widely available. But we still have some kids who come in in first grade. Did that?
Yes, perfect. And so we might, in our communities, be talking about enroll your kids early, don't wait till the last minute, because that helps with all the planning for classrooms. My other question is, or, well, on the ELL, the drop that we've seen, if I go back to past presentations about the appropriate number of hours per student, we're either at or maybe still below the guidelines. And so I guess I just want to put a pitch in that this is not a place to be looking for cuts at this time.
We're still quite a bit below the guidelines.
Yeah, thanks. We're a lot below the guidelines. And the preschool numbers are low. We are still in the process of screening quite a few, and I think ultimately that number will be around 12 to 15 students who qualify, not five. So we'll have to really think about staffing that piece because that'll be new. So, yeah, we're working on that.
Yeah, just one thing. In your packet, I had 10 in for pre-K EL. We were estimating when the packet went out because we were in the process of screening, and we're still screening and rescreening. So I changed it to five for this presentation because we actually have five identified right now, and we are submitting SIMS next Thursday. So I want to make sure that these numbers match what the state gets. But Dawn said that, you know, we're likely to go up. Tessa?
With the Boxborough kindergarten numbers, I know that we had talked, I don't know, maybe it was last year, that there was a waitlist to get in the kindergarten from Acton. So were all of those students allowed in?
There's still a waitlist. So we just want to be really careful that we don't enroll so many Acton families who have younger siblings that we outsize the building. So as Blanchard has gotten full, last year and this year, I'm being much more careful. So you'll see the Ks in Boxborough are 17, 18, 16, 19. And the ones in Acton are 20, 21, even, there's a 22. But we stopped putting more kids over because anyone who moves into Boxborough who wants to go to Blanchard gets to go there. So I want to make sure there's room, not only for Ks that enroll, but over the next number of years. It's, you know, pre-regionalization, one of the things that happened with Boxborough Public was if you have 70 kids one year and 40 the next, that impacts a small district, small budget immensely. And so when we feed that into sort of this bigger district, so the projection for this year was 75, and we got 60. The projection for next year is 41. So it's almost half of the projection for this year. Now, I don't know what to believe. I think three classrooms will be safe with a projection of 41. A year ago, the projection was 53, or maybe two years ago, for next year. And now it's 41. So even with us receiving fewer kids, I don't know. We'll see what happens. But I did this last year. The projection was 313. I planned for 330. We got 330. So I don't know. I've got no magic, but I'm just trying to be safe on either side, so. Eileen?
I'm kind of curious about the economically disadvantaged, those data. We can see from 2008 to 2018, it's kind of like dramatically different. So what, my question, I have two questions about it. So how do we determine that, you know, the determination, I mean, the category or the way we determine who will be economically disadvantaged, gets changed, or how those numbers jumped over there? But what is the, you know, how do you decide it?
Yeah. So we don't decide. It's a state process. So the state qualifies based on income. And many more low-income families are moving into Acton and Boxborough for lots of reasons. That's the biggest thing. There was one change in, I think it was 2013, in that the state now automatically qualifies families who are qualified for some of the federal programs. So families who qualify for Mass Health or SNAP or Medicaid are automatically qualified through, it's called the gateway. So we're automatically notified about those families. Otherwise, families have to fill out the form. The form is standard across the state for what qualifies. And then, so the qualification criteria hasn't changed, and it's fairly low in terms of income. I have always reported free and reduced lunch, students who qualify for free and reduced lunch, so that the numbers are consistent over time. The state does also report something called economically disadvantaged. It's a smaller number. And I have yet to figure out exactly the difference. So these numbers are all free and reduced lunch, but on the state website, you'll see both free and reduced lunch and economically disadvantaged.
So how do we, all those numbers are really huge now. And if they're, those number will, how do we do with those, I mean, those family, they have this kind of a disadvantage? Where do we get money? Do we get federal or state funding to support them? And where do we get those money to support them?
We get federal money to pay for lunch. So the lunch is subsidized by the federal government for students who qualify for free and reduced lunch. Beyond that, there isn't anything. So we do get some Medicaid reimbursement, which we report to you, which is about $200,000 a year now, or $250,000. We get that after doing a lot of reporting on services we provide for students. Peter or Dawn, do you have anything to add to that? Eileen's asking. So we're looking at things like waivers for fees and field trips and boosters and some of those things, supplies, to see what we can change in how we operate to make sure that all students can be included in the things that we're doing.
So the reason I'm asking that is just because I don't know if we should consider that from our budget, because it looks like one out of 10 students needs a lot of help from, you know, economically. That's the reason I'm asking.
Yep. I think we appreciate the point, and I think you'll be hearing more about that in the budget process because we're thinking the same way. Angie and then Mary?
So on the same topic, so the trending that we see, the increasing, is it pretty much the same as, do we see this all over in Massachusetts or comparison to town? Or is, I'm trying to see if this is in line with everybody else, or we are kind of different?
Let me look into that a little bit more. I'm honestly not sure. I mean, I, go ahead.
So there's a, overall, I think economically disadvantaged rates are increasing. But if you want to take a look town to town, there's actually a great website that's a resource called massstats.com. And it's, massstats has three S's in the middle of it. But it's a great website. You can look at all sorts of indicators, community by community, and pull some comparative data. But it will go through just about any piece of data you want.
Other one is, do we have the similar data for the student with IEP or for student with need additional help?
We don't have that tonight. We did receive a question about that. We generally provided that in January, but we might be able to do it in November when we come back on November 15th.
I just want to say that I agree with Eileen. When we're looking at the budget, we need to be thinking about how we support these students. And I want to say, one thing, great thing, I think the district has done in recent years is move to payment for lunches with codes, because then you can't tell if it's a kid with a free lunch or a kid who's got, you know, their parents put money on the card. And so it's a great way to not, you know, point any fingers or highlight anyone's economic status. So I think that's fabulous.
And we've added breakfast in all of our schools now. So we're providing breakfast in all schools. Similarly, you use your code for your lunch, and nobody knows who's free and who's paying. Michael?
Do we have a projection for those families? I mean, for the, maybe next five years or 10 years?
For economically disadvantaged families over the next five years? I don't think we do have a projection.
Is it possible to do that? Or is it, I don't know. It's just, you know...
It's a good question. I don't know how we would.
Doing this, so, yeah. Just a thought.
There's no information provided to us that would allow us to accurately project that. We would only be able to take a look at historical trends and see that we see we're in an increasing pattern.
Right, but we do have a projection for, you know, like those affordable housing, right, in both towns, right? That could be an indicator.
Yeah, but we would need a reliable source to be able to calculate that, and I don't think we have that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Item number 10 is the School Building Committee. Mary, do you have a report?
So very quickly, on our last meeting, Arrow Street brought to us a number of, well, so they've taken the plots on the Douglas property, the Gates... well, so they've taken the plots on the Douglas property, the Gates property, the Conant property, and looked at water, wetlands, and hundred-year flood zones, and mapped all that. And then with those constraints, they've mapped potential buildings in a very, very cursory, first-cut way to have us look at what should they continue to explore. There were five options that they presented to us, we cut it down to four that they should continue to look at. And it does involve all three, the Douglas, the Gates, and the Conant properties. That presentation is on the website, if people want to look at it. I will say, though, it was really a guided tour during the presentation, perhaps a little difficult to just look at and understand alone. So if you have any questions, you can let me know. Otherwise, I'll move it to the ed plan.
Okay. So this is item ten point two on the agenda. We are doing a first read on the ed plan for the MSBA. This was sent to us Tuesday night, and it's in, it's in here, right? Yep, yeah. So this is a first read. The MSBA requires this to be kind of on their desk on November seventh, I believe. Is that correct, Mary? Yep? Okay. So we will do a first read tonight, take your feedback. The team will go and make any necessary revisions if so needed. And then we'll have a second read at our next school committee meeting, with the hope that we will vote at that point, November first, is it?
Yeah.
So at this point.
Do you mind if I make a couple comments and maybe have Marie make a couple?
Not at all, sure.
So first, thank you. I, I just want to recognize, you know, Marie and Deb and Dawn and, you know, a lot of our administrators, principals around the district, Joe Gibbowitz, Pam Smith, just a lot of work went into producing this, and it was certainly a collaborative effort. I want to just put a little bit of this in context and then let Marie make a few comments as well. This is intended to be an architectural document. The intent of this is not to create a curricular document for the district, which outlines curricular programs, but the curricular programs described are those that are needed by the architects to inform how they design the building. That's really the intent of it. So when you're reading it, I think it's helpful to understand what the final role of this document is. Beyond the building project, this doesn't exist. All right? This is really to inform MSBA's decision-making process and our architect's decision-making process. We have curricular documents, we have long-range plans, everything else that, that already exists. I think the other piece of this is to understand, you know, this is a first read, there's additional editing that's going into this document. What we're hoping to do tonight is to take your feedback about the big-picture questions or concerns that you may have and feedback. And then we will also be doing the same thing with the architect, to make sure that it meets their lens of what they need. And we're also putting this out to our owner's project manager, Chuck from Skanska, because he has extensive expertise with MSBA processes and a lot of experience doing that. We want to have him put his lens into what are the types of things that need to be said in this document, and how does that need to be worded in a way that MSBA can use so that we can justify the maximum reimbursement for the school project. So again, it's really an architectural document, that's the intent of it, inform the design of the building. But in order to inform the design, we have to describe curricular programs. So with that said, Marie, do you want to make a couple comments?
Sure. We're really excited to have this in front of us. It is still a work in progress, there are some things we'll be modifying. We had a relatively short timeline at the end here, from the time we got the architect on board, we got, you know, officially accepted with MSBA, and then we had to do all the visioning. So what, what's good about our district is that we had been through an extensive master planning process and extensive visioning before. So we had, I want to say, a 280-page document from all, everything to do with visioning from a year and a half ago, that was sort of a starting place for us. So the visioning we did this time was, we were able to tailor it more specifically to what we would need, with the idea that we're hoping to get approved for a twin elementary school with our early childhood program, all part of the same facility. So the way that we did visioning, and we're thrilled that almost everybody on the school committee was able to make it to at least one of the sessions or to one of the sessions, so that was great, as well as the building committee. The first session we did was just the leadership team, so the principals and central office administrators. And then we had a session with Conant, a session with Douglas, and a session with Gates, and a session with the early childhood program. And so each group was able to explore really what's important to them, their core values, and really think about what it might be like to be in a shared facility. And so that all happened two weeks ago with, we had a bit of a summary meeting this week. But, so meanwhile, the thing, the lens, exactly what Peter said is true. So what we're trying to look at is, a year and a half from now, when we're working with the MSBA to say, yes, a steam lab is important to us and is worth you reimbursing in this facility, we want to be able to look back at this document and have an explanation in here for why, and I use that as one example, but why the architecture of the building that we're looking to construct meets our educational plan. So that's the lens. And so I guess what we'd like to ask is, if you have any feedback, to send it to us by next Wednesday, Tuesday? Peter, what do you want to say?
Well, I think it's good to hear some feedback now, too, on some of the big-picture things. And then if you see a detail in a document that you want to offer some feedback on, you see something that needs wordsmithing or is confusing, I think that's a great thing for an email. But I would suggest anything substantive, we probably want to talk about a little tonight.
Okay, thanks. Okay. So Adam, you clearly have something to say, so go ahead.
I'll get the ball rolling on this. First of all, I want to thank everybody who contributed to this. I think this is a great synthesis of all of the work that we've been doing over the past few years, from the first visioning sessions all the way to the most recent visioning sessions, master plan review committee, all of that is really well-placed in here, so I appreciate all that work. I have, I think, four points that are, are quick. The first one, in, in most of the discussion, or sometimes in the discussion, there's highlights of the existing conditions and how they're insufficient. And I think we've covered that a lot already in a lot of our previous documentation. So editorially, I think that it makes more sense to sort of keep to the formatting where we have current curricular plan and desired future needs. And I think some of that is just torn between the, the different people who wrote bits and pieces. I did want to, in the physical education and health area, I think it's important that as we talk about the outdoor spaces, that we, again, highlight the need for the softball fields that are existing on the site. We had a lot of community input that expressed concern about those, those playfields, so I want to make sure that that is somehow recognized in here, as this is also then a document that the community and the public will look at. Under the special education program, again, I think there's a really well-written and great description. I believe that Dawn and Deb, you guys have done some really great explanation of some of the programs that we've added in number, in a number of the buildings, and sort of providing that continuum of services and inclusive environment. And I think that it would be great as part of our introduction to include some of that description, because we are going to then look at spaces that provide inclusion opportunities in this building. Sorry?
In the present part?
Yeah, right, in the, in the area that says special education programs, right in the, the introduction there.
And can I just say, because you said this to me, not just inclusion, but the programs we're trying to keep in district and that kind of thing?
There is a paragraph in here about the case programs. And without diving too deep into this, we've, we've done a lot of explaining about existing programs that happen in buildings, in those, those specific elementary schools. And then if there is a potential desire to add programs, and I think that's sort of unclear in this short paragraph, so I think it's worth diving in a little bit more to explain what current case programs happen in any of those three elementary schools, and then what our desire might be to either maintain or expand those, because clearly that has an impact on the space and the, and the number of rooms that we would want in that facility.
So Adam, if I can just ju- jump in on that, we're actually meeting with CASE tomorrow.
Great.
But that was the first opportunity we had to meet with them.
Yeah.
We've been very clear that, you know, we understand that our limited space has negatively impacted our ability to work with the collaborative.
Yeah.
And that's one of the commitments we need to make as a district, is to continue to support our collaborative efforts. So we're meeting with them tomorrow, and I've been in touch with their new executive director to start a discussion around what are the types of spaces that they think they need. If they're able to provide that to us before we get to the educational program and when it's due, I think that's great. If not, what we're hoping to do is just include enough information to be able to, to reserve that space. But maybe we can even use that as some of our language.
Excellent. Last two, in the lunch program section, I felt that we've had a lot of conversations around size and scale and comfort of the cafeteria spaces, and I didn't feel that reflected in, in this paragraph here. We've talked a lot about how the small spaces for the, those people who might not be able to handle the, sort of the large atmosphere, and having a diversity of spaces, not just two separate spaces by schools. And then lastly, I think the, the paragraph on transportation, we need to elaborate, elaborate more on a number of the concerns we've had around multiple entrances, exits, community access, parking, the, not necessarily the transportation around the building in general, but just that physical plant about, do we have two or three, or how many entrances and exits, how many bus loops? I think some more details need to be sort of highlighted in, in that paragraph. Again, I, I think this, this was an amazing read, I really appreciate all the work that you guys put into it, so thank you.
Tessa?
Maybe this, I, this was noted, under the project goals, I remember in the Douglas visioning session, just because of the form that Frank provided us with in terms of the different categories of spaces and things like that, I know it was brought up that reading and math specialists weren't reflected in the form he gave us, and it was expressed that that was something important. But I noticed, under project goals, it says, "Small group instructional spaces to provide equitable learning experience, experiences for the increasing population of high-need students." And while the reading and math specialists are technically regular education, I suppose, it was something that was brought up during the Douglas visioning, and then when we, under the part where it says, hold on, now I got a, "School scheduling methods," it says, "The district has a systematic approach for implementing reading interventions and supports with students for academic needs." But if we leave the reading and math specialists out of that project goal space, I don't know, it just seemed like a disconnect to me. Because we're saying that we use those and utilize those, but then it didn't seem like there was a space for that, and maybe I'm missing it.
In the math section for future design needs, under the first paragraph, it says, "Smaller breakout spaces, offices will be needed for the math specialists." And I think we have something similar for reading as well, for a reading suite underneath the English Language Arts, the Literacy section.
Sure.
So we can certainly put it, I guess, in two different places, if it makes more...
It was just because the project goals are like bulleted, and so if you were looking at it broadly, it seemed to me to be missing from there, which sort of reflected what was said during the Douglas visioning piece.
Maya, did you have a question?
I really wanted to thank Adam. He touched on many things that I wanted to mention, namely, transportation and parking. I think one of our newer buildings proves that if you don't put a lot, a lot of thinking and good planning into parking, you have serious pedestrian issues, you have serious parking issues, lines, busing, whatever, like, it's, I think personally Parker Damon and Charter are a mess. And boy, this is an opportunity to, you know, not repeat that. I'm going to admit that I've read this in, in pieces over the last 24 hours, and so I, I didn't get to be as thorough as I would like about it. But I, I felt like there wasn't a, much of a note around surroundings and, and whether the building will be pleasing and aesthetically fitting with its surroundings, or at least reverent of, of, and in touch with nature in some way. And I know that a lot of what we think about lately is ways to get kids outside, whether it's in gardens or play spaces. And so just that, just to, some language around the relationship between the building and nature. Again, I'll point to the Parker Damon building, where I think we, the whole back play area was quickly filled in, and so nothing can ever grow there, including grass. And it's just this, you know, really dry, dusty play area for years and years for these kids. And so I, I just hope that we really consider a, a building that is well-placed and, and well-planted or landscaped afterwards. But yeah, thanks, Adam. I, I'll mostly, I, I concur.
Paul?
So I noted in a, in a couple of areas, the small, the, the phrase, "small breakout spaces, offices," are those, I just want to, I'm curious, are those closed offices or are those open offices?
I'll take that. So that's, when we do this, we're not yet designing spaces, and whether they're open or closed, what we're doing is, we're talking about what types of spaces will be allocated square footage within the building design. And then, you know, there's, there's something called a space summary template that we're going to receive from MSBA, that goes space by space within our existing buildings, and what types of square footages we should expect within the new building, and how those are allocated to different spaces, whether they're general education classrooms, cafeterias, lunchrooms, special education spaces, things like that. And what we're really doing in this is determining what types of space we need, and our ability to talk to MSBA about how that should be allocated. Once that occurs and we submit that original proposal, and then we're into a phase called schematic design, then we're actually meeting with the architects in small focus groups to plan every space within the building. We can determine, is it open, closed, glass, full wall, door, whatever.
Maya?
I forgot to say how much I enjoyed reading it, and I'm sorry I didn't start with that, that I meant to do that, because this is, I really pictured amazing elevated learning in this building, and I thought it was very well-written and described so many important things, so thank you. I really loved the document overall.
Angie?
So is, I am, I think I asked a question, which, this educational plan is for Douglas, Conan, and Gates, right? For...
So I can, I can answer that. It's titled, "The CT Douglas Elementary School," because that's the title of the MSBA building project. We've been approved for a feasibility study of the CT Douglas Elementary School, that needs to be the title of it. The reason we also broke out sections for each of our schools is because within the scope of the CT Douglas Elementary School project, they've offered us the opportunity to include the feasibility study of either building, of either renovating and adding on to the existing school, considering building a new CT Douglas standalone elementary school, or considering the option of building a twin school with early childhood center that could either be located on the Conant site or the Gates-Douglas site. So there's really, there's four main options available to us that we have, are required by MSBA to study, but it's all under the auspices that this is the CT Douglas Elementary School project.
So, because the three school that, right now, I'm trying to say is, was this kind of similar building environment? So kind of define the future, because this project is defined the future, next 50 years, right? So, because if, if we have a similar architecture environment, for the, kind of define that for the future, three elementary school is going to have very similar educational plan as well. There's not going to be as specialized as we currently now.
Yeah, we, and so in the educational plan, the way we've laid it out, what we chose to do for each of the sections is to provide an overview of what's consistent across the district, and then allow each school to add a personalized section to that. What we believe as a district going forward needs to happen in the construction of this building is the facilities need to be equitable between both schools, and that's anticipating that we end up doing a twin school with the early childhood center. We also know that school philosophies change over time and focuses change, and one of the major design elements that we need our architects to listen to is that whatever space we build has to be flexible and can be changed over time to use that. We don't want to build a Douglas Elementary School that can only function for the 2018 vision of Douglas, or the 2019 vision of Douglas. It needs to be flexible, the facilities need to be equitable between. And then I think what we do within it and how we teach kids within it can each evolve over time based on the need... on the needs of the kids.
Thank you. Mary?
So I'm going to echo, thank you for all the hard work, and same as Maya. I just got a good feeling reading this, and I was even more excited than I already am on the building committee. I did have a few points. On pages seventeen and eighteen, for visual arts and performing arts, there's no section on future design, and I'm sure that's because many cooks were here and bringing it all together, but you might think about, I think you're, I think what you're doing there is laying out some of what we have, and it might be in there in the text, but to call it out to be parallel to other sections. And same on page nineteen for physical education, and same on page thirty-one for security and visual access. Is there anything you want to call out for future needs? On page twenty-five, for the future of special education support, it was not clear to me if you're calling for one suite of professionals per school, or one suite between the two schools within the twin building. So I'd be clearer there, and perhaps you want to call out either the number of staff or the number of spaces, because it wasn't easy, if I were designing it, it wasn't easy for me to see, how many offices is that? And so maybe a little more specificity. On pages twenty-eight to twenty-nine, the future of the early childhood program, on page twenty-nine, there's a very brief sentence about access to specials. I might elaborate a little more, and maybe in addition to specials, I would say special education OTPT, because we want to make sure that those students have all that access. And then I'll just echo page thirty, I think the transportation could be fleshed out a little more. But excellent, thank you.
Can I just, I have a little bit of, so one of the things we grappled with was how specific to be and how general to be, so we on purpose didn't say whether it would be shared or separate, and we on purpose didn't count how many offices, because we don't, if we say six and we need eight, we don't want to, so part of me is a little worried we were too specific in certain cases, because we don't want to be held to something before we get into design.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll think about that.
If that's a deliberate choice on your part, that's fine with me. I just, knowing this was done quite quickly with a lot of folks, I want to make sure so that you're thinking through what you need.
Yeah, because there's definitely things we missed, so that's good.
Yes, I think some of that will come up in the template that Peter mentioned too, in turn, when we start to really look at those spaces. But additionally, just as a reminder, our early childhood program is a special education program that accepts students who are general education, so I appreciate the point that maybe that's not quite clear, but it would remain, it remain as such and have have its own staff, so thanks.
Maya?
So under transportation, or near it, it, would it be possible to add a section for walkability or pedestrian safety? Is that, is it, I know you're trying to keep it general, but I feel like it's so critical to approaching a school.
We sure can, and that's a good point. You know, if it's in West Acton, it's a highly walkable area with many families who live in the area, so that's a great suggestion, and I love the suggestions about transportation. We definitely have to add that, and similarly, school lunch, cafeteria.
Any other comments?
How about biking, that was the bike trail?
And the hoverboards.
I just want to add, for the special education, and when I read this, I was thinking a lot about models for for delivery of services in the gen ed setting, and then when students struggle, what is the model for supporting them in the gen ed setting, but also out of the gen ed setting? And what's kind of space needs come to mind when you think of that? And I think it's really challenging. You have to think into the, into the future and take into account possibilities that might come from new, new ways of thinking about how to deliver those services. So I think that the idea of flexible spaces is really, really critical. You can't lock yourself in, you you kind of have to, because that's what we have now, but you also, I think it's the challenge of architecture in the modern era to, and for this project specifically, to to help us create those spaces that will help us move into the future and have the spaces we need, so we're not in the same position, even 50 years from now. So, thank you for all the hard work on this.
Okay, I think you have enough feedback on that, yes?
Actually, do you want to just give us a deadline? Because we are going to vote this at the November first, we absolutely need that vote, so a deadline for any feedback.
I would like, I would like to support what Mary said before, Wednesday.
What, I mean, today's, today's Thursday.
Can we say Tuesday? So we, no, the whole reason is we want to have a final version in your packet next Friday, so that you can.
Right, that's why I was thinking Monday too, because what I, my thought process was that if we collected the committee feedback, and we got a lot of it, but if there's additional, we want to be able to turn that around, get it in, and then we want to send it to Chuck and Emily at Skanska and Arrow Street, and give them at least 24 to 48 hours with it before it go, I know, I don't know, I mean, I I could buy into Tuesday, I just want to make sure we have enough time to to give them a look at it.
You have a fine Wednesday.
Okay, Tuesday it is. If you could, your way, why don't you send feedback to me and please copy Beth on it? Thank you.
Okay, thank you everyone for your feedback. Item eleven is the superintendent goals.
All right, so hopefully we have as much feedback as we just had. So for superintendent goals, I want to talk you through these a little bit. So, in the memo, I highlighted a few things for you. One, you know, I've evaluated an awful lot of teachers and administrators over time, and what I realize is that this system is incredibly complex and can be cumbersome, even though it can also be highly effective in terms of receiving feedback to continue to improve performance. And so I tried to do a few different things with this. And the one thing I want to particularly tie in is the use of the rubric in evaluating someone on the standards and indicators can really become cumbersome, because there's, you know, like forty-two or forty-seven elements in indicators to just the superintendent rubric, which if you try to, if I tried to provide you evidence to every single one of those, you would be reading evidence for six weeks. I would be producing evidence starting tomorrow, and that would be my full-time job until the end of the year. And it, it, the rubric wasn't intended to be used that way. What the rubric is intended to be used is to be able to focus someone on what they want to improve over the course of the year, not to just try and prove every aspect of what they do. So when I was writing goals, one step I tried to take in writing them was, A, to provide you an overview of the goal, to provide you some key actions that I would be taking toward that goal, provide some benchmarks and samples of how evidence might be used toward the goal, and then to tie the actions of that goal into the various standards and indicators in a rubric that you might see, so that as you're looking at the goals I produce, you're also able to look directly at what evidence toward the various standards and indicators. And what I think happened is you can see from the standards and indicators I referenced, is it crosses all four of the ma, four main standards in the superintendent's rubric. So I thought that maybe provided a little bit more focus to it, and I'm hoping that that's something that you might find helpful in the process. The four goals, the first goal, student learning goal, is something that for a new superintendent coming into the district, my primary job is to actually learn about what the opportunities and gaps are for student learning. And so the focus of my student learning goal in year one was really going to be around that entry process, and that through all of my meetings with stakeholders, reviewing district data and documents, getting into classrooms and really looking at what teaching and learning looks like, and then working with the senior leadership team, it's really about, A, completing the report of entry findings, and then B, subsequently working with you and the senior leadership team to then develop the future goals of the district and what that looks like to support student learning. So that's my hope, is that that's a comfortable goal for you, for that first student learning goal. In terms of the professional practice goal, this is something that is kind of now an expectation of both MASC and the Mass Association of School Superintendents, that the professional practice goal for new superintendents is the participation and completion of the program, and the work with your coach over the course of the year. So, I mean, that's, there's a lot of time, I'm out of the district eight days over the course of this year, excuse me, nine days, because there was a July date as well, and those are all full days, so there's quite a bit of time devoted to that, and in addition, there's 30 hours of contact with my coach in person, and then a lot of phone conversations in between. So that really is the professional practice goal, and that's to make sure that I really have the skills necessary to execute the student learning goals that then come as a result of the the entry process. And then the district goals form the remainder of that plan. I did not provide you a lot of information, because we just provided you with very detailed information about key actions, evidence, benchmarks, through the long-range strategic plan, and specifically the 2018, 19 goals. So the remainder of those goals will be all the evidence that gets compiled over the course of the year toward our district achievement of each of those three goals. So there's the student learning goal, entry process, professional practice goal, new superintendent induction program, and then three district-wide goals. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you for any comments and feedback.
Mary?
So I'm going to qualify this statement with, I know you can do this, but in the past, we have had issues with too many goals and there being too much on the superintendent's plate. You've essentially taken full district goals as well as re-entry goals, and it's a lot, and I just want to make sure you're comfortable with all that. I mean, I know you and your team are going to be doing all the work around those district goals, but I guess there's an opportunity for you to rethink it and say, for your personal goals, you're only going to take some of it, if you think that's appropriate.
Sure, no, thank you. I think, you know, my primary work as a superintendent is to help the district make progress toward the goals. I think the hardest and most comfortable element for a superintendent is recognizing that your job is to coordinate the efforts of others, but it's really, you're reliant on every other faculty, staff, administrator within the district to actually execute that stuff. But my effectiveness is only judged by how well we can coordinate that work and move it forward. I'm actually very comfortable with that, I think that's ultimately my responsibility. But, you know, I also want to recognize, and I'll say this again when we're getting toward the evaluation time, that, you know, there's like a level of humility about it, because even though I'm presenting the work as my goals, so many people are doing this work, and and, you know, I want to make sure I'm respectful of that. But no, I do see that as a superintendent's job, and I've actually tried to with crafting the student learning goal around the entry process, and the professional practice goal around the new superintendent induction program, I would be doing those as part of my work. And I think what's so important for, as a model for all of our educators, is goals aren't something that you create to do in addition to the work you do, goals are something that you create in order to improve the work you do, already do. So I I think that's an important model to set forward, so I tried to be pretty conservative in crafting those.
Anyone else?
So I had a observation around the timelines and in both the goals that are the district goals and yours, and I just, I wanted to hear from you. I'm amused to seeing deadlines, you know, dates, and and really like kind of more tangible, hands-on, like I can hold it in my, I like these very much, but I wanted to understand, and I think I do understand, why we have more, like vague is really the wrong word, but just, just, you know, while you have months, but I wanted to just get a better understanding of why you chose to not to be very, very specific on what the tangible outcomes were going to be and when those would be delivered.
Sure.
Okay.
So I think, you know, as we lay out plans, and I'll, I'll talk about maybe the district goals first, because those have months associated with them. As we talk about district goals, we'll say something by spring 2019. When we administer surveys to stakeholder groups and things like that, we have to also be sensitive to various school calendars that are in effect when it's, you know, like if we're asking high school students to complete a survey, you know, we have to be sensitive that they can't do that in the middle, if they're in the middle of a big English project, they can't stop English class to take a survey, something like that. And sometimes to predict out an exact date at this point of the year when we come to you for adoption, it just doesn't really work, and I think my, I think what we want to do is provide, my take has always been, provide benchmarks for completion of work, because if you try and be so specific, you are setting yourself up of a, like a 90% likelihood of failure to get there. So what I try and do is be general in terms of some of the deliverable dates, but specific enough that, you know, if I get to, you know, spring 2019, or, you know, we're coming up on April and we haven't done any of these surveys, then that's certainly something that we're behind schedule on. I don't know if that, that helps make sense. I think in terms of some of the other goals, you know, we are planning, for the district goals, we're also planning to update you around district goals through various school committee presentations that take place over the course of the year. That school committee calendar is still in draft format that we're developing, and we're trying to shuffle some things around to keep meetings in a manageable length and not have them drag on for three and four hours long. So because we're shifting those, and it's my first year, we don't yet know exactly when those presentations will fall out, so it's kind of tough to to be really specific. But, you know, two things that will happen, you know, mid-year, I will come back to you with a brief memo that updates you around progress toward the goals, and we can have a discussion, and I can go elaborate a little bit more about how we're doing. So that, that will be a hard deliverable, and then as we head into the evaluation process, you'll also get some evidence and a description of what's happened from me as well, so there's a little bit of a narrative to it. So that's a hard deliverable as well, and then you couple in the various presentations that take place over the course of the year. Those are just intended as the updates.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So this was a first read, so we'll be seeing these again. Do you want to have members send you additional feedback, questions? Okay.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, the, the only thing I always say with feedback or questions is if it's a detailed type of a thing, like it's, it's really something that, hey, I see a typo here, or I think this wording of this sentence is unclear, I think that's great feedback to send in an email, but if there's anything of substance that, say, you had a concern about a goal, or you wanted something more specific, I always think that's good to discuss here in this forum, because that really then gets the whole committee's feedback. So I think this is that opportunity now for the broader discussion of it. Otherwise, please feel happy to send me, please feel free to send me feedback. That's why we shoot for 8:30. Please feel free to send me feedback if it's just something minute.
Okay. So we are burning about 35 minutes over time, so I'm going to try to pick up the pace here. We're on item 12, and this will be brief. In your packet, you found a brief memo from me regarding changing, potentially changing the meeting venue for school committee meetings. So I will take feedback on that now. I can tell you that I did speak with Danny Factor today on the commission of, from the Commission of Disabilities, he sits on that commission, and they're going to put us on their agenda, in order to get into that space and get it assessed for accessibility, we need, we need to be on their agenda, so we will be on their agenda for their November 20th meeting, that's their next meeting. We can get in there before then, if if we can get JD over there to assess the space, or we can shoot for, what I'd like to do is just give it a, give it a shot, one meeting, see what it's like. But I, I want to get your feedback and and hear what is important to you in terms of a meeting venue, what you, what you would like out of it, and what you, what improvements you think could be made, what you're looking for, what your expectations are for proving the, all aspects of the meeting, public, public participation, relationship building, efficiency, and so forth. I'll take Maya, and then Tessa.
I went into the space yesterday and thought it has great potential, I thought that it had some, are we, are we just discussing changing a venue in general, or that space in particular today? or that space in particular today, tonight?
Either one.
Okay. I thought it had a lot of positives, except for lighting. I have, I have real concerns about the lighting. I think it will, I wish I had seen it at night, but there's one strip of lighting for that whole great big room, and I think that would have to be addressed. I also thought, I didn't get any eyes on furniture, but I think one of the key components of changing our format is not having the chasm between, you know, me and everybody else there, and tightening up the group and making us feel like we really are conducting a business meeting around the same table, not around a lot, you know, I don't know how many tables. So, furniture would be the key, you know, the table layout would be key also to think about. And if we could, if those two things were sorted out, in my mind, I thought it was a far better space if it gave us those, that flexibility of seeing each other with lighting and a better table and decent seats. Beth had mentioned maybe sitting on the stage, and I was really weary about that, because I felt like that distances us, distance, puts us at a distance from the audience or the, our observers, and, and having them look up at us, which I just think psychologically, like, isn't great. I thought that we should still continue to be accessible and visible and near our, you know, people who have, who have made the effort to come there. And the ramp even further distances people from the stage, so I just would caution us about that. But I'd be excited for the, the change.
So, one of the things that I think is hardest about this space, aside from the chasm, is that it's really hard to hear. I've noticed, especially sitting at an end, like I have to crane over to hear what Dawn might have to say, or I find it hard still to hear you, Paul, even when I used to sit over there and I sit right across from you now. So, having sat in that room for a visioning session, obviously, we didn't have microphones, but I didn't find it particularly easy to hear. You know, the only other experience I have having a large group meeting is when we have our BLF meetings in the Sargent Library, and it's much easier to hear. We don't use microphones, and we can talk, so that's my only comparison to how it could sound. I mean, there's quite a few of us, and we sit with a big chasm in the middle. I mean, we sit sort of in this kind of configuration, but it's not hard to hear. I really worry about the sort of perception of us, I mean, the admin building is kind of like tucked away. There's very little parking right at the building, and, you know, we're heading into winter where it's certainly dark by the time we have our meetings. I know that there's lots of auxiliary parking kind of on the side over there, but the perception from the public, I mean, that's sort of being like tucked way away inside that building, which I already feel like a lot of people don't even know where the admin building is. I feel like the only reason I know where it is is because I go to like a million meetings there, but those, those two things are the biggest concern for me. I don't really remember the lighting when we were sitting during the visioning sessions, but I do recall not really being able to hear people, which obviously, you know, I guess we use microphones, but that's part of what makes this feel not warm and fuzzy and tight and relationship building, but those are just my thoughts.
Mary?
So, I was thinking similar to you, Diane, that before we just say, "Yes, it's a done deal, let's do it," that we try and see how it is. My memory from visioning is it was dim, and I am also, the things I'm most concerned about are hearing each other well and, and seeing each other. And so, I do also wonder, like, I personally would hate to buy furniture for that little tucked-in room. We could consider new furniture in this room, and then we could reconfigure this differently. The difference with BLF is that it's not one desk wide, it's wider, and so it's more square, so there's not as many far down, and we can, we're closer. So, consider it furniture here and maybe better sound system here as one option.
Any other thoughts? Adam?
Yeah, I, my only concern is around the infrastructure required to support us. So, clearly, we have the cameras and the, the infrastructure in place to be broadcast on ACTN-TV in this space, and I think that, to sort of echo some of the other comments, I think before we make a commitment, we should probably try out one or, or more spaces or reconfigurations here, because there might be some other follow-on requirements to make sure that we have the same level of accessibility to the community that we do in this space.
ACTN-TV would love for us to go to Town Hall. That's where their state-of-the-art equipment is, and the equipment here is old. If you go on ACTN-TV, it's not great quality, so that would have to be explored, for sure.
Mary?
So, I just want to say, because I've heard that idea about ACTN Town Hall, I have a visceral reaction to it, and I will say I'm the kind of person who doesn't love change, so sometimes you have to go slow with me. But that feels like it pushes us as an ACTN group, and we're ACTN Boxborough, and so I'm a little uncomfortable with ACTN Town Hall.
My feeling was if we did it at ACTN Town Hall, we'd have to also hold meetings in Boxborough Town Hall as well.
So, I echo that, before any change, either we change the configuration here or to Dallas, then we may give it a try to see how it works. I give, yeah, I agree with that.
Okay, anyone else? Yeah, so I think that we'll do that. Let's, let's try Danny's place once, and we'll, if anyone's had any ideas for room configuration here, this is a tough space to reconfigure, but we'll play around with that too, so you may walk in and be surprised at, at a future school committee meeting. Mary?
Can I make one more comment? So, before we were this large, our student members actually sat at the table with us, and that was really nice. So, as we look at all that, I'd like us to try to consider that as a possibility as well.
Okay, thank you. Maya?
Do the administrators have to sit with us beyond Peter? Was there, did I once hear that they didn't, you didn't used to sit with us, but now you do? I'm just wondering for space.
You have as long as I have.
We love to have you. It is, no, it is handier, but.
You can sit on the couch.
Okay, thank you for your feedback.
I was waiting for that. I was thinking, whose couch?
I was thinking about the princess.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to move to item 13. We, we have a recommendation to accept a gift from the ABPTSO to the RJ Gray Junior High for the FYI Student Plan Book, and this is a vote, so I'm looking for a motion.
Move to approve with gratitude.
Second.
All opposed? Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor? All of us, subventions. Okay, subcommittee reports. Amy, anything, what's going on in policy?
That's okay. So, policy hasn't met. Our next meeting is on October the 30th at 4 o'clock, I think. Best, okay, that's confirmed. So, October 30th, 4 o'clock.
Okay. I just, I'll draw attention to the, in your packet, that, that the policy subcommittee did have a meeting. What was the date of that meeting?
So, I did report on that at the last school committee meeting, but yes, we did have one.
Yes, and there's, the materials from that meeting are in the packet, they're really fantastic, if you want to just take a look at a nice overview of policy, what it is and what our policies are.
Can I just add, that overview page of what policies are in what section, that might be really nice on the web page, website also, because there's so much, it's a nice organizing.
Okay, item 14.2, the capital improvement.
I'm sorry, Diane, if I, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting you, I thought you were.
No, that's okay. Did you have, did you have a question on policy?
Yeah, I just have a legislative update, very quickly.
Oh, you do? Okay, sure, go ahead.
There is, the Massachusetts Legislature just passed an act called, "An Act Relative to Students with Dyslexia," which is a great step forward, and I'm wanting to talk to Amanda at some point to get her thoughts on that. But it is to address the struggle that many families face to get a proper diagnosis of dyslexia, and a timely one, sometimes more importantly. So, this act puts in place the systems necessary to create early screening protocols to improve literacy and, and effective diagnosis at a much earlier date, hopefully. So, that's, that was actually unanimously passed by the legislature, which pretty much, you know, doesn't happen with anything of substance, so it's a great step forward.
Thank you. Okay, so the Capital Improvement Committee met on, on the 10th and had a very robust discussion about first steps and, and what the progress has, has been till now. I don't know if you want to speak to in any detail about what the plan is.
Yeah, sure. You know, we, we talked about a couple of things. One is making sure that we have an accurate listing of items that, in the capital plan, and we're currently working with SCANSCA to narrow that list down and make sure what's there is really accurate. We're going to be discussing that over the next several meetings. And then, the second was really taking a look at, you know, funding, and there was some discussion about how can we fund the capital improvement plan, but also ensure that we have adequate funding for ongoing capital that's required beyond the capital improvement plan? Because we know if we stretch this capital improvement plan out past five years, we're going to already be coming up on new items that now need to be fixed. And then, in addition, we know that there's items that principals would like to improve in their buildings, just for educational purposes, that we also can't delay, you know, at least unduly. So, I think it's, it was really a discussion of what are some of the different strategies that we might use to do that. We did talk about, you know, what does 1 million over five years get us? Was there an opportunity to possibly bond it within the operating budget? What might that look like? And we're just starting those discussions, they're broad philosophical discussions, and the reason that we incorporated members from the both finance committees was to make sure that this was a transparent discussion, so that whatever options we chose in the end to forward to you as our preferred selections, really also had broad communication back to both communities, and we could garner support long-term for our capital improvements.
Are there any other reports from liaisons or anything like that? Okay. Okay, before we adjourn, I'm just going to very, very quickly draw your attention to the FYI 16.2, which is the finance, ACTN Finance Committee's point-of-view statement. It was included in the FYI, so that you have access to it, and, and I encourage you to sit and, and read it. This will be part of a discussion that we have, it will form part of a discussion that we have when we start the budget process, when we launch that. But I wanted this to be here, I think it's important that it's here now. So, if you have never read it, it comes out every year, please take some time to go through it, formulate your questions, and then when we actually launch the budget season, you'll have a little bit of background knowledge, at least in terms of the FinCom's perspective on the budget. So, please take the time to go read that. Thank you. Okay.
Can I highlight two FYS? So, I also just want to highlight the Sharon Maxwell Learning Series for Families. You can see that there, that is November 5th, 7 to 9, in the RJ Gray Junior High School Auditorium, and that's one of our family learning series events. And then, I'm sure as you all were getting in your cars today to drive over here, you noticed a turn in the weather, and so, you know, let it snow, let it snow, let it snow, is not my mantra. We will, it will not snow in New England this year. I guaranteed that, I think, to you when I was taking the job, so I just want to make sure that you understand there are no snow days here. But just in the event that I can't follow through on that promise, we are sending that memo out to families and staff this week.
Michael?
Yeah, regarding this, this no-school-and-delay opening emergency release memo, and what I just heard from the, some parents that they, they are asking why we are, you know, notifying them about this, you know, on the, at 5:00 p.m., not the, you know, the evening before that, because, you know, 5:00 a.m. is kind of a late for the parents to schedule their, their day.
So, our goal is to be open every day, and it's our intention going into every school day to make that decision so that we can open, with the intention of opening. What I will say is, you know, there are times, but they're rare, when we know the day ahead, that there's just an impending blizzard, there's nothing we can do about it. And, you know, certainly if we can, know ahead of time, I'm all for letting people know ahead of time. But what I also know is that I, the meteorologist batting averages are lower than most professional baseball league teams, and I never want to bet the, the losing a day of school on the forecast. So, oftentimes, it's iffy enough, or the rain-snow line changes, things like that, that we really need to just continue to monitor the storm. So, we need to post the last time we get that notice out to families. We're always going to try and give families as much notice as possible, but unfortunately, it is New England at schools, and we also have to try and get schools in whenever possible.
Oh, I forgot what you put in, into the memo. It's a by 5:00 a.m. or it's just at 5:00 a.m.? Because I forgot, I forgot the exact word.
I think we said 5:30 a.m., if I'm correct.
Or by, by or at, because if it's a by, then if you could know earlier, then you could notify the families earlier than that, so that'd be great.
Okay, I'll see what I can do, I think it's already up the door.
Okay, all right, great, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
Just, Michael, I'm kind of surprised you're hearing that feedback, because almost every time in the last two years, we've called school, we've called it the night before. Earlier than 5:15, 5:30, then we get complaints, we're waking people up earlier than we need to, because phones ring all over the place when we call. But most times, we've done it the night before. Last year, there was at least once when people were calling school and we waited, and then we didn't have to, nothing happened. And then, there was another day we waited till morning because it was so on the fence, and we had had so many days, we were trying really hard not to cancel, but we really have done a lot. But I have to tell you, it feels like each year, it gets more and more like this. It's 10:00 a.m. the day before, and everywhere you go, people are like, "When are you going to call? Why, why haven't you called yet?" It's like, and Bill, Bill decided not to call till school was out the day before, because he found it disruptive for students. So, you know, we'll, we'll see where Peter lands, but we certainly call the night before anytime we possibly can.
Mary?
And I would just add, when you call the night before and then no snow comes, or parents get really cranky about that.
I know, I understand that, I saw, yeah.
So, you have to understand the balance.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, it's a hard, it's tough work, but just, you know.
It's probably the criteria the community would like us to evaluate Peter on.
That's why we evaluate in April and May.
Amy?
Yeah. I just want to say, last year, there was a really great article in the Boston Globe about the, about the superintendent's job calling snow days, and just, it's got to be the worst part of any superintendent's job, because there's no winning. You cannot win. So, just wanted to, if you guys go back, I, I, I think it was in, I think it was last year in like February, March, February, March, something like that. Anyway, it's a, it's a very nice read.
Okay, I'll take one more comment. Angie?
Just want to clarify, so this includes like delay, right? If there's like two-hour delay, that would be announced by the time. And when you do that, and I made this comment before, and not just snow, can you take the temperature, the absolute temperature into consideration?
Yeah, we take all of those factors into consideration, yeah.
Okay. Someone want to move to adjourn? Oh, really?
I, I have one quick comment.
Okay.
That's not related to snow day. I, I want to thank the administration for printing out and putting on our table both our operating protocols and our long-range strategic plan. Thank you, Beth. I would, I would also like to suggest that instead of us taking these home and throwing them away, we leave them here so that they can be placed on our table at the beginning of each meeting.
Yes, so the, the plan is to laminate it.
Laminate them, yes. So, please don't take them home, save the trees.
Yes.
And I'd also like to move to adjourn.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed, subventions? Good night.